Promotion approval of the agenda. Salute.
Hi.
Ed. Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Flint?
Yes.
Mark? All right, John?
Yeah.
We have a few retired.
Okay, yes. So it is my disdain pleasure, we have a couple of individuals that retired this fall. And I, it's, it's special to me because I get to say, I was the one who hired Keith Puppington years ago, and that was, you know, pat myself on the back for that. He, you were, you were just outstanding as custodian here at high school. And, and over the years, our, our high school, as I've told you, it's like it, it, twenty years and it, and you just, you just kept it so nice and took such good care of it. So we really appreciate all your service and, and want to honor you on your retirement. All right. And also want to recognize a colleague and a good friend. Mark, you know, when, when a superintendent is looking for a district or takes it, or is, you know, is looking for, to perhaps take a job, this, the, the ones with some wisdom would say, tell me about your director of buildings and grounds, because it's such an important position, and such an important position for the district. And your twenty-plus years of service and the way you handle the job in thick and thin and, and the things that we got done, I just can't say enough about all that you've done for Mount Pleasant Schools. And I just, I appreciate you so much, just working through some of the things we had to work through and working through the details. And, and you just always, always did it with a lot of grace, even under, under, you know, fire pressure at times. So I appreciate you a lot. Thank you for your service to the district. Yeah, I was on your hiring committee as well. That's right, yes. And finally, I, I just wanna, we have one board member who did not seek reelection. And Martha, just, I appreciate you so much and all that you've done these four years on the board. I don't think you probably ever envisioned when you, when you came on the board, the last year and a half or two years, you know, but.
It was interesting before that, too.
Yeah. Well, I, I am just so thankful, I'm, I'm so thankful for our board and the way that you guys, it's, it's always students first and student perspective, and, and you always brought that perspective and, and challenged thinking at times, and that's really what you look for in a good board member. You brought that classroom perspective to the board, and we just appreciate you a lot and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. I wish you have a birthday kid bringing treats. Everybody who's here can have a cookie from Cookie Maybe over there.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Martha.
Citizens comments, you have anybody going?
No, I was not contacted by anyone to speak to the board.
Approval, minutes, claims, and financials. Have anything you wanna?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, there were a couple of bills in there that may have stood out to you, and they both had to do with the failing family consumer science room. Um, we had the, all of the electric in there, Wellington Electric, that was about forty-four thousand dollars. Your dream home, furnish furnishings and flooring, that was for the flooring in that FCS room, seventeen thousand dollars. So, and when we're done, if you, you know, if you haven't seen it, I'd be happy to, to open the door back there and you can stick your head in or, you know, take a look. And then just the other thing that I would mention, it's not a lot of money, but maybe you saw, we had four principals, four of our administrative team members who went through the bullying investigation training with the ADA. And so that's, that's always a great resource for us to have, so that if we, if we do have a, you know, a complaint or we need to look into something, four of our administrative teams have gone through that, that newly revised training, so that was part of those as well.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, Matt? Waiting for a motion.
Move to approve.
Diane? Sorry. Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Flint?
Yes.
All right, John?
Yes.
Health services update.
Okay, so we're, I'm very thankful that Jennifer is here. Uh, we were going to also use this as an opportunity to introduce you to our new school nurse, Taylor Raymer, but our school nurse is Sid. Yeah, so anyway, Jennifer graciously said, yep, let's, we'll go ahead and do this. So Jennifer, I'll run this.
Okay.
You, you go ahead.
All right, well, we are gonna start by, next slide, introducing ourselves. So Taylor has been a great addition to our staff. I really enjoy working with her. She comes to us with a history of Peds and OB experience at Mercy Iowa City, has really fit in really well here into the school nursing role. It's a, it's a very different role than anything else in, in the nursing world, especially in hospital setting to school setting is a big difference, and she's done a really nice job, so really happy to have her. Pam Haley, we added to our group last year during the midst of COVID, Certified Medical Assistant, has been another great addition to our team. Uh, she is, uh, it's just so nice to have another pair of hands, I mean, it's really beneficial. And then there's me, I am starting my ninth year here in the district already, so I've been at this for a little while now.
Looked, did I go past something?
A few.
Well, didn't dare we.
There we are. So this is just a quick snapshot of our current student population and some of the health concerns that we have, that we monitor and we work with these students and talk with the parents and just kind of help organize their care while they're here at school to make sure things are safe for him, for them during the school day. So just, you can see there's a wide variety of, of health, health needs and concerns and various levels of involvement in the care that we have to provide to these, this group of students, so we're just ready whenever. Uh, this is just a snapshot, kind of some of the things that we do day to day. Each day is very, very different. Um, I usually come in with an organized plan in my mind of what the things I want to do every day, and that plan is usually not the same by the end of the day, and it's changed several times throughout the day. So, um, but just some of the things that we do, our role every day varies between, you know, just supplying band-aids to playground injuries, sometimes calling an ambulance for a broken bone or other need based on our assessment. And communication is not mentioned several times throughout this, we communicate with a variety of people, whether it's the students and teaching them about their health needs, communicating with parents, especially with those injuries or whatnot, collaborating with teachers and, and any health needs that may have, the students may have, but they need to monitor for in the classroom. So just a lot of, a lot of talking and communicating with, with various groups. Back one more. Other responsibilities that we have include, we write individualized healthcare plans for students, this is something that only an RN can do, so Pam cannot help us with this. We also write emergency plans for those students with the serious health needs, like the anaphylaxis or the peanut allergies or whatnot, so we, we know what to do if that student should have a need. We attend IEP meetings for a variety of students, especially those with health needs. Communication, again, we are in charge of the process of administering medication at school, so we are talking with doctors, we're receiving doctors' orders, we're talking with the parents, make sure that we're giving the medication safely and appropriately. Um, and part of that medication administration is also training and overseeing secretaries to help us with med administration. Obviously, there's three of us, we can't all be in all the buildings at all the same time, at lunchtime when most of the meds are given, so they help us out there. And then sometimes, depending on a need, we may attend a, a field trip, we prepare for all of them, make sure they have an emergency kit, but if we need to attend, for example, we've had elementary students with diabetes and they can't take care of it on their own, we've offered to the parents, even parents can go, but they were unable to attend, so the nurse went with them just so the student could attend the field trip with their class, so. Uh, lots of things that we report to the state, lots of things that we are responsible for. Immunization audits every fall, we have to verify that each student has the, is current with their required immunizations or if they have the appropriate exemptions on for, on file. Um, and then Henry County Public Health does and complete that audit in the fall, and then they report that to the state of Iowa. Dental screens, working with an iSmiles coordinator to get those dental screens for kindergarten ninth grade students, lead screening, something I'm working on currently, and then vision screening for all kindergarten and third grade students, although we usually expand that to more than just kindergarten and third, we do more ages or grades in the elementary level. This year, we're gonna partner with American Eye Care, a volunteer to come in and, and try and just screen across, screen each K through five students, sort of, see how that goes and just change that up a little bit, but. All right, another part of our role, Medicaid billing for reimbursement, so takes a lot of time, but so every year, we try to start the year, kick it off, get an educational meeting with MJCARE, our Medicaid reimbursement or billing company, so bring them in, they can educate the special education teachers and the par educators, just kind of get that foundation for the beginning of school year so they know how to do it. Taylor and I then review the documentation with the teachers and staff, we have to make sure those billing logs coincide with the IEPs and how it's written and make sure it's for the correct number of minutes that we're billing for and, and a variety of things. So we do work closely with them. And then once, then we have to talk with the doctors to get a medical diagnosis, the correct code for Medicaid, making sure that the documentation, once the logs come to us, that they're correct. They're, it's a pretty tedious process, just to make sure all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed, otherwise they will, MJCARE will send it back to us for that process to be done again, so we make sure that's all done. Before then, we send it to MJCARE and then they submit it to Medicaid. Last year, we did generate over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the district in Medicaid billing reimbursement. This was a little lower, but we did have several students that we would normally bill Medicaid for, they stayed home due to COVID, so. So we do work with the community quite a bit, and, and Henry County Public Health has been someone that we have, we have worked very closely with over this last year and a half to two years, they've been a great resource for us. So in addition to the immunization audit, we usually work with them in immunization clinics for students. Seventh and twelfth graders have an immunization requirement, so this spring, I hope to work with them, have a clinic here at the school for them. Um, we've also been helping them in some of their COVID vaccination clinics, because they were such a great resource to us, we're kind of helping pay them back a little bit. And then just any other questions we might have. Uh, we broaden our, our scope a little bit there to Washington County, and when we meet with the iSmile coordinator who's for the region, that person is a dental hygienist that comes and completes dental audits, making sure that kindergarten and ninth graders have dental screens on file. That person also comes and does dental florid varnish for the preschool age students, and then comes back again and applies dental sealants for second and third graders that qualify. So we just kind of help facilitate and coordinate all of that. Uh, we work with the Henry County Health Center, who has been a resource for our CPR classes, for our preschool teachers, for coaches for recertification, so they've been helpful with that. The AEA, of course, with the OT, PT, IEP development coordinators. Um, Iowa State University extended outreach, working locally with Sadie Martin and Erin Heaton with the programs that they provide for school wellness in the school for Switch, Pick a Better Snack, and the Five Two One O campaign. Some other health promotion activities that we also feel is important, get into the classrooms, especially at the elementary level, and we just teach about germs, personal hygiene, as they get older, we talk about puberty. Um, and then the switch program, of course, is integrating, targeting, school wellness integration, targeting child health. So we primarily focus on the fourth and fifth graders, but it seems like when we are implementing that program, that most of the school ends up benefiting in some way from that, so we kind of broaden that. District Wellness Committee, I am currently a co-chair with Lisa Lowery for this committee. And this committee is requirement for each district, school district participates in the National School Lunch Program, so just kind of ensuring that we are following some wellness practices. And then I'm also a member of the Healthy Henry County Communities as well, so. Uh, lots of people that we couldn't do our role without, primarily secretaries at each building, because they cover things and triage when we're not there, call us when they need to. Uh, this year, working with Martha Peterson and all the guidance counselors, it's been, we collaborate with them a lot, especially, you know, sometimes we, there are students with some social emotional needs, and then they present to us as nurses with physical needs, those things, so just working to help, help, help that student have the successful day at school and so they can move forward. Of course, administration, teachers, par educators, and then food service, working with them with food allergies and these students that have special diets, IT, any tech needs. For example, we have a, some students with diabetes that have a continuous glucose monitor, so it sends a reading to their phone. Well, we have an iPad, a mini iPad that we also carry, so we can also get their glucose readings, and so even though we may not be in the building with that student, we can still monitor them and kind of know if they're trending up or down. Custodians sometimes clean up messes that none of us want to. Transportation and then central receiving desk helps me order a lot of supplies. And a wishlist, so some things that we want to continue to work on, and it's still kind of a new process to us, is modify and improve the process of the health data intake during registration, so we just need to keep tweaking that. Um, it seems as though we get less information since we've gone to online, so I don't know if we just need to change our form and work with IT or Lisa Dudley do that, or if there's just another way that we can, we're just missing some of that one-on-one communication too that we used to have. A dedicated health office space in each building, just to confidentially assess students and have confidential conversations with students and their parents, sometimes that's really a challenge in some of our elementary buildings specifically. And then we'd always just, it's always great to increase our health support by grow our number, a number of health service staff. Pam has been a huge help to us, but there's just still things we'd like to do that just time-wise just don't get to, so do the most important things, so. Questions you have for me? Ready.
Do you each have your own designated areas?
Ah, great question, yes.
I mean, where, where are you, you have a warning, so you've got a plan?
Yes.
And then you just throw it out the window.
Yeah. We do, we, we, we meet at central office, we kind of power well, and we each do have our specific buildings that we, we each look over and care for, so I'm at Van Allen, Salem, I cover the preschool and middle school. Taylor's at Lincoln, Harlan High School, and Wisdom Quest. And that way, we really get to know the students and know their families and make those connections and, so that way, we kind of just can focus on those areas, it's really been a good thing.
I can't say enough about the work that these guys do, it's pretty amazing, all that they have to get done and, and, you know, it's, it's obviously a very, very trying time this last year, you know, but they do it with, again, a lot of, a lot of grace and, and I just very thankful to them.
Thank you.
With us discussing the building, what is the space like and what elementary schools are, do not have the space for?
Currently, Salem, Salem's always a challenge. It seems like you can always find a little corner, though. Um, Lincoln is a challenge right now because the desk, the nurse's desk is in a hallway, but staff walk through quite a bit, so it's just not, and there's a phone there, but it's just hard to have that conversation with the parent without feeling like you're out in the open. Harlan is a little bit more of a challenge this year, they used to share space with guidance counselor, but the guidance counselor hours have been increased, and so then they're there more, so then the nurse is just kind of looking for spaces to administer care or assess a student, so.
So three of them really don't have any space, go out in the hallway?
Sometimes, or you find a classroom that's empty or tuck into, yeah. The principals are always usually really good about letting us borrow their office if I need to make a phone call or something too, I mean, it's flexible, it's just not any of them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, John, you're up, two more minutes before.
Okay, uh, several things. The first thing there, November sixteenth, so next Tuesday, the site committee is gonna meet with the representatives from Carle Nelson and from S N P A Architects, that's at four o'clock, and I think we decided we'll go ahead and meet out here at four o'clock to just give us a little more space than, than the conference room at central office, so plan on, plan on meeting out here. Uh, I'll get that, that meeting posted, of course, get the agenda posted, but we'll plan on meeting out here at six o'clock next Tuesday. Four o'clock on the sixteenth, yes. It is Tuesday, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, um, school board convention, thank you to those, I was able to talk with board members at the committee meeting, so I think we have five board members who are able to attend the convention, and we'll just go up for the day and, and come back on the eighteenth, so we're looking forward to that. Number three, review certified enrollment. So I was able to go through these documents with the policy committee and the finance committee, with the, the site committee, we had the HVAC retro commissioning group, and so we didn't really have time to, to go through that. So let me just quickly go through our October twenty-one certified enrollment. So remember, certified enrollment, we do the head count, or the number of students who are registered on the first school day in October, so that was October first this year. Um, and then, and then we spend between the first of October and October fifteenth is when we, we actually hit the certify button on the Department of Education website. So remember also that enrollment drives funding, so enrollment obviously is very, very important to our school district. So let me go down through this comparison, and when it says current, that is from October twenty-one, okay? And then previous would be one year ago, all right? So current is, was this October, and previous is what we certified a year ago. So the first one there is resident public students attending your school district. So this year, one thousand six hundred and ninety point one, and again, remember as well, point one could be because you get different weightings for students who might not be a full-time student, that's why it might be part of a one point zero. So sixteen hundred and ninety, a year ago was seventeen twenty-seven, so that was down resident public students, resident meaning they live within our school district boundaries, I was down just about thirty-seven students. Resident public students, the next one down there, resident public students attending another Iowa public school district, those will be students who are open enrolled out, so that's a hundred and thirty-five point seven, a year ago was a hundred and twenty-seven point two, so that's up eight point five, okay? The next row is non-public shared time and CPI students who are dual enrolled for district classes. So these would be students who are not full-time to Mount Pleasant District, but they are taking some classes in our school district. So this could be students who maybe they attend a Christian school, but they are taking so a course or two out here, or, you know, a lot of ti, a lot of times, it's, it's some of the music programming that we have, or it could be homeschool students who are doing the same thing, picking up a class here and there. You get some weighting for those students depending on the type of class and the number of classes that they are taking. So this year was four point one eight as a, as a total amount, and then four point two last year, so that was down just a bit. We didn't have any of those same students who are, who were taking a post-secondary enrollment option class, that was zero. We didn't have any students who are residential facility students enrolled for any district classes, that was zero. So when it comes to our actual enrollment, our certified number was one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine point nine eight, so just about one thousand eight hundred and thirty. A year ago, it was eight, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight point four, so we were down twenty-eight point four two students in certified enrollment. Next column, non-resident public students attending your school district, so these would be the open enrolled in students. So this year, we have a hundred and thirty-seven point five, last year we had a hundred and thirty-five point four, so our, excuse me, our open enrolled in was up just a little bit, two point one. The pre-K four students attending your statewide voluntary preschool program, our preschool kids this year, the weighting, the total weighting would be thirty-five, so remember, our preschool kids, you, you get point five of a, of a student for funding purposes, you get point five, so that will tell me that we have seventy students who are attending our statewide voluntary preschool program, and that was down just a bit, be a total of five students from last year. So this column here, the total number of school age students who are provided instructional programs and services by our school district, so whether you're, whether you're a resident student, or whether you're an open enrolled student, or whether you're a part-time student, what's the total school age, the weighting for the total school age students that are receiving services from our district, one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one point seven eight, a year ago, that was one thousand eight sixty-six point six, so it's down thirty-four point eight two, the number of students that we are in total serving. And then the last one here, the limited English proficient weighting, we, we get additional weighting for English language learners who are part of our ELL program and receive some additional funding for the, for the additional needs that those students have, and that was down a bit as well, four point zero five, or six point zero seven on the weighting, and ten point one two is where we were at last year, so. So let's just, let's dig into the numbers ju- So let's just, let's dig into the numbers just a little bit. I went, I went a little bit deeper with the policy and the finance committee, kind of taking a look at some of this. So let's, let's just look at the numbers just a little bit deeper. So if you, if you look at grade level size changes from the year ago, that might tell you a little bit, give you a little bit of information. So for example, kindergarten to first grade. So in 2020, the, the size of the kindergarten class was 130. Of our re- these are resident students, resident students. And in 2021, the size of that kindergarten class was 133, so that was up three. If you do that same thing from first grade to second grade, from, you, you go from 127 to 123, so that was down four. So if you look at each grade level as you just, you know, follow the candy up there. Next grade level, second to third was down four, third to fourth down seven, fourth to five down four. And fifth to sixth, we stayed even. And by the way, this is not, it, it's not necessarily, you know, we, you, you, we may have more students. It's not static one, one to one, you know, if you had, if you had 22 new kids come in and 22 leave, you'd be, you know, up, up, or you'd be down two. I'm not saying it's the, it's the same student, you know, in and out. So fifth to sixth, we stayed even, sixth to seventh, we were up three. Stayed even at seventh to eighth and then eighth to ninth, down one. And then this is the one that kind of stands out, does stand out. Ninth to tenth was down 16 and then tenth to eleventh down six, eleventh to 12th down seven. So I, I went through and just to try and get an idea, you know, of kind of what's the movement of our students and what is, what's happening there. So I went to that, the roster in ninth grade and I, I took the roster of our students in ninth grade and I took the roster of our students in 10th grade because I thought, well, that might give me the best feel for what's, you know, the movement on the students and what's happening. So I went down through each one of those students to see what, was there a records request? Where did they move? What, you know, what, what was happening there? And as I shared with, with the policy committee and the finance committee, families just moved. They moved. They moved from Mount Pleasant to Cedar Rapids. They moved from Mount Pleasant to Illinois, Mount Pleasant to Georgia, Mount Pleasant to Utah. In that particular class, and I can, I can only assume that, that, that would be the same kind of movement in, in those other grade levels. And we didn't see a lot of kids that were going from, you know, Mount Pleasant to the online program at Burlington or KAM, you know, the K-12 connections. I just didn't see, at least in that group, a lot of that happening, so. So those were a few of the grade level sizes. And then the last thing I thought I would show you is the comparison in the A E A, Great Prairie A E A. So let me squeeze this down so we can, you can see everything. So the school district is over here. This is the number that they certified, your certified enrollment, as we talked about in that first document. And this is the number that are served, okay? So the way that you would, you would, might look at this, Albia, 1,142 are certified and they serve 1,104. So that would, that would generally, I think, tell me that they have a number who are open enrolled out from that school district. So we get just going across with Albia, their certified was down 7.2, served was down 27. So let's go down, I just wanted to look at, at some of the districts, you know, in our conference for comparison. So Fairfield, their certified number was 1607.4 and the, the served number was 1,536. So their certified stayed about the same, was up about, about five. And their served number, the number of students that they served was down just about 28 students. Fort Madison, which is a little, you know, about our size, Keyakup and Fort Madison are, were about that same Mount Pleasant size. Fort Madison is, was certified in 2,048 and the number served is 1,721. So they were down 31 in their, in their certified enrollment and down 67 in the number of students served. Keyakup, 1,870 and then the served number was 1,720. And their certified number was down 32 and number served was down 57, a little over 57. Mount Pleasant, our certified number was at 829 or that 8, 828 is what, what the final number was on there. And then 1,830 is the number served, so we were down that. I did this, I did this before I printed off that other, that final comparison, so. 20, 20-ish, 29-ish and then the number served was, was down that, that amount there, so. And then Oskaloosa, I, I generally look at Oskaloosa as really the best comparison for us. The, the towns are similar, you know, the industry is similar. They have William Penn College, we have Iowa Wesleyan, so I often look at Oskaloosa. And they were, they were down in their certified number, 34 and down about 30, or 2,930 in the number served. So if you look across the A E A, the number certified, 32,505 students are being, are, are certified in Great Prairie A E A. That was down 1,366 region-wide. And then the number served, 32,218 and that was down 1,333.1 region-wide.
John, is there any data or a way to get other districts, their percentage kind of of resident public students attending another public school compared to their resident public students kind of at school?
Uh, yeah. You, so you want to know how many, how many are open and enrolled out, how they kind of these comparisons work?
Showing just a quick map, we're like 8% of our population is just going out. I know they don't know if that's comparable with other districts or?
Yeah, I, I would, I don't know that I can just go to the D E website and get that. I'll, I'll, let me take a look, but I can, I can certainly ask the question. You know, I can ask their superintendents for that number, yeah, yep, so.
So most of the stuff I've been seeing on the news is there have been like Ankeny's enrollment is up like they will have to in a few years. If it continues like this, we'll get an, adding another high school. I mean, that's the, that's the things that I'm seeing that.
All about demographics and.
Um, okay. So I, I also wanted to, number four, going a little longer on the super superintendent's report here, but I, I just wanted to share with you, we've talked a lot about some of the workforce shortages that we have been facing. And so I, I won't spend a ton of time on this, but Lori LaFrance sits on what's called the SEAL region, Southeast Iowa Link. And that, it's, it's really the, the region and the members of the SEAL, of the SEAL region are organizations that provide services, human services to our families in that region. So it could be, well, you can see what services does your entity provide. So outpatient mental health, inpatient mental health, crisis services, community-based services, vocational education. Of course, we would fall in, prevention, substance abuse, those kinds of things. So that's, that is who the SEAL reg- region is, is made up of. So they did a workforce study and, or survey actually. And I'll just, just hit some of the, the graphics here. Does your organization currently have job openings posted? And a little over 80, 80% said, yes, we do have job openings posted. And if your, if your organization has jobs posted, how many positions are posted? So you can see one to five, six to 10, 11 to 15 and some have over 16 jobs that are unfilled. So you, you can just, I will go through, you know, all of this. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to share with you that some of the workforce challenges that these kinds of human services like us organizations are challenging. If you have open positions posted, how long have those positions been posted? So you can see that there in the graph. Does your organization currently have positions open that are not posted? A few, but most everybody is posting what they have. And so all I, all I wanted to try and do is, is just, and this is, this is a big question here. Has loss of staff affected your organization's ability to provide services? And over 70% answered yes. So the works, the workforce shortage is a, is a, is a huge challenge. Number five, the S R 3 plan, went, went through this as well with the finance committee. The S R stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. These are the funds that were provided by the federal government in, in combating COVID pandemic. So it, it has come to us in, in three different, they call it S R 1, S R 2 and S R 3. So the CARES Act funding that, that we received back in the spring of 2020, that initial investment that, that the federal government made, $315,929 must be spent by September 30th of 2022. We have, that money has, we have expended that money. It was used on salaries at the time for cleaning and additional hours in, in response to the pandemic. We used a lot of that on cleaning supplies and equipment to get up and going to meet our return to learn plan. So that money has been expended. The S R 2 dollars, which is an amount, as I shared with the finance committee, those dollars were, were dispensed in relationship to Title I funding. Title I is a federal, federal program and, and it's, it really is most heavily tied to your free and reduced lunch program and the number, number of your families who are, who are in poverty, who qualify for poverty. That S R 2 funding is about 1.634 million dollars. And we have spent somewhere between 600 and 700,000 of that. It, it was sharing that spreadsheet with me a, a week or two ago. And that came up at our, at our site committee meeting. So, so about 600 and 620,000 dollars or so of S R 2 has been spent. That must be spent by September 30th of 2023. We've used some of that to try to improve our airflow and the healthy airflow into our buildings. We paid for our ret- our retro commissioning program with that. The Edge Annuity Program, when we had students who were, who went online, we, we paid for our Edge Annuity Program from that. Our summer school program, which we're going to continue, we'll continue to support our summer school program for the next three summers with this funding. That was a big piece of the S R 2. We were supporting some of our, this is just, this wouldn't be everybody, but some of the salaries that we're supporting in response to some of the mental health challenges with the pandemic. Additional counseling time, our interventionists. We have a, a part-time interventionist working for us this, this spring. We're hiring two additional interventionists who are December graduates that will use some of this S R money for. We expanded our I JAG program, again, to try and meet the needs of our students as a response to the pandemic. So we have that S R 2 funding that we're using. And then the S R 3 funding, again, was in relationship to our Title I funding, is 3.67 million dollars. You have to set aside 20% of that funding for learning loss, which is 734,000. So we will continue to support our expanded summer school program with this funding. Our, you know, our counseling, that, and that has to be spent by, where did I, where is that? It has to be spent by 2024 September 30th. So expanded summer school programming will continue to support our additional counseling time, our interventionist I JAG, other, other things that would be of a, kind of a mental health support and a, an academic support for our students. And then we have been looking at, okay, how could we use some of these funds to support our HVAC improvements in the building, improving that indoor air quality? And that's, that's the conversation that we've had with Carl Nelson Construction on, you know, what, what could, what, what possible projects could be done to improve that airflow and quality of air? We've talked about conditioning, conditioning the air in our high school gymnasium, conditioning, conditioning the air in our middle school gymnasium as potentials to use some of that funding for. So more to come on this. The S R 3, you have to put your plan together. It does require some public input at a, at a board meeting. People want to comment on the, on the S R 3 plan. So more to come on that, just wanted to give you an update on the S R funding. More to come. Okay, statewide school board elections, this was just FYI. We had our elections last week and I always appreciate the School Board Association. This is what Iowa looked like in the school board election, so let me go down here to the legend. The red districts were districts that had two seats or more on five-member boards and then three seats or more, four seats or more. The red was kind of that five-member board across the state. And then the blue got into three seats or more on a seven-member board. So we would fall in that light blue category right here, three seats that were up on a seven-member board. And that would represent 70 districts across the state. So let me pull back again and you can kind of see the state as a whole there. And I'll go over here and pull in on our region. You know, some of the, some of our neighbors, of course, Mount Pleasant, three seats or more on a seven-member board. Fairfield, Washington, Fort Madison. So you can see just kind of how our, Keyakup as well, some of the elections for our school district. All right. And then the legislative update. Some items to share with you on that. These bullet points came from the Executive Leaders Group. That's a superintendent group across the state that meets a couple of times a year. They went over some of this information. Fiscal year 2020, for the state of Iowa, there was a surplus of 1.24 billion dollars. And that was 751 million dollars higher than the Revenue Estimating Committee estimate, so that's good news. Where does the surplus have to go? The state's cash reserves and the emergency economic fund balances are all full. And so nine point, or excuse me, 963.1 million dollars is transferred to the taxpayer relief fund, which is required to be spent on taxpayer. uh, which is required to be spent on taxpayer relief. And then a remainder, the remainder of that two hundred and thirty-three million can be, you know, can be used for discretionary spending. A hundred and thirty-three school districts across the state, this are on the budget, across the state are on the budget guarantee for fiscal year 22. That we, we would be in that group of a hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, declining enrollment was a, was a driver for both the budget guarantee and then also the very small state aid dollar increase that we received. It was something in two point, two point seven, that is how it was for fiscal year 22. Uh, supplemental state aid for fiscal year 23, uh, you know, will be interesting, interesting because it's driven by enrollment. Uh, because of the, well, the, the thinking is that because of the pandemic, uh, six thousand students opted out of, uh, of, and counted in enrollment. And I don't know what the, what the, what the final certified number for this last October for the state was. I didn't look into that. But it was estimated that as much as two hundred and fifty million dollars in state money would be required to fund a zero percent SSA if six thousand students joined back or came, came back into, uh, school districts, that'd be a zero percent. So I think it's going to be very interesting as the legislature convenes. Um, and I already talked about the education workforce shortage. Um, and that was talked about at, at Executive Leaders. Finally, uh, the new legislative district maps were approved last week. The legislate, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the House and the Senate called back in, uh, and they approved the maps and some pretty significant changes in the maps for Mount Pleasant and our school district. So let me pull in on this just a little bit. See, you can see. Uh, let me, I'll, let me, let me scroll down just a little bit so you can kind of get the lay of the land here. Of course, uh, this Lee County down here. This, this senate area and this, Jeff Reichman, uh, who was here a couple of months ago, he will no longer, whoever represents this senate district, senate district fifty, will no longer represent Mount Pleasant. So let me, let me pull in on Mount Pleasant. They really kind of, uh, chop our district up quite a bit. So you can see here, um, this Mount Pleasant and west, right here, Mount Pleasant and west now becomes, now becomes representative, uh, District eighty-seven. So assuming that Joe Mitchell, uh, continues to desire to represent our area, he would represent that, uh, that, that District eighty-seven, which cuts kind of Mount Pleasant. You don't have to go very, very far east of town, um, and you enter into a new representative district. So it's hard, it's, it's hard to see on this, my apologies, so I, I won't, um, but suffice to say, we're going to have two representatives, two people in the House who are representing our school district and two people in the Senate who are representing our, our school district. Okay? So if, if you just go back to, to, you know, geographically where things are at right now, Joe Mitchell would, you know, if he runs, would continue to represent our school district, um, in, in House District eighty-seven. The west and north of here, I don't know this individual, his name is David Kerr. So just geographically, Morning Sun is still in that House District ninety-five. So he would be the other, uh, he's, you know, the current representative who would represent that geographic area. And then Adrian Dickey, I do not know Senator Dickey. Uh, he would be that senate district to the west. Uh, he, he's from over in the Packwood area. And then Senate District forty-eight, which reaches quite a ways up north, Mark Lothgren, again, right now represents that geographic area. So, you know, I mean, uh, it, it has been good over the years, you know? Joe knows our district very well. Uh, Senator Reichman has known our, knows our district well. He's from that Keokuk area, and of course, Rich Taylor, he was the senator for many, many years and, and knows our district very well. So it'll be very important to have good communication with whoever is, are in that, that other House District. And yeah, who knows, you know, you might get people who live very close to Mount Pleasant who decide to run for those districts. But that's, that's not how it would be right now when you look at it geographically. Uh, final thing, I did add this just very quickly because I think it's, I think it's very important. This came to us this morning, um, from the AEA, the AEA Purchasing Co-op. And we get some of our food through the co-op. And now they're starting to talk about, uh, school food shortages. You guys probably have seen, we have had to change our menus up a time or two this fall because we, we have certain menus that are planned and then we can't get the, the food items that we needed to do those menus. Um, so, uh, just, they're talking about, you know, it's just like everything you're hearing, labor shortages, shortages in raw material production, manufacturing. And it's, this kind of says it all. School order fill rates historically that were at ninety-five percent are now at sixty percent. So, um, they are encouraging us to evaluate our current inventory levels, explore all available freezer and dry goods storage space, and consider strategic increases in products on hand. I've talked to Cheryl Wilson and to Melanie Carrato, our food service consultant. We're ordering what we can, when we can, as much in advance as we can to try and stay ahead of the supply chain constraints. So when you see menu changes, this is what we're getting.
I think it'll probably come down to lack of variety, which is with the food manufacturers. Instead of producing five or six different things, they're only producing two things. And so that's going to be a result is you're going to have the same thing you want.
Yeah, yeah. So my apologies for the length of that. There's a lot of stuff to, to talk through, but that is superintendent's report. All right, uh, next thing, we had board meetings last week. So we have minutes and notes in front of you. Any questions or comments? I don't have any comments unless committee members need, want to put something out. No other communications, John? No, I don't have it. No, no one brought anything to my attention. So next thing is personnel and open enrollment. Comments on that, John? No, those are in your packet unless you have questions. So I would recommend that you prove. So looking for a motion to, to personnel and open enrollment? Second. Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Monter?
Yes.
Good shot, yes. Just, just one other comment about enrollment. Uh, I was talking to Cindy about our, um, uh, you know, the October one date and then the October fifteenth certification date. And Cindy's been doing this a long time, and so she's got a good feel for, um, kind of the ebb and flow of enrollment. And we were just chatting the other day about how, uh, it's almost without fail, after that October fifteenth, we really see a significant influx of students and families from about that October fifteenth to that, you know, early November time that we're in. I think she mentioned the other day, we've probably seen a sixteen to twenty student, uh, increase coming in. And we did, we have had five or six students as well that have left, but it always seems to, seems to swing that way, so. Luck of the draw, right? Well, I, I don't know if it's luck of the draw, but, um, we, it seems, it seems to happen. I don't know if other districts would, would see that, that same, same swing as well. Maybe I'll ask them that, that question. So, anyway. All right. Ed will review the fiscal year twenty-one Certified Annual Report, followed by the Special Education Supplement and Transportation Report. And the spent off, right, of the report.
Yeah.
Throw it all in there together.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, what these reports are, at least the first three, are reports that had been certified to the state as of September fifteenth. I apologize, I'm just getting through that now because I was absent last month as I was residing in Damsel International Conference, Milwaukee. So, uh, but what I would like to do is just kind of go over some of the highlights of the reports. Uh, the actual reports are posted on the board website that anyone has access to. Uh, but what I did, and what I like to do is I'd like to summarize the data from these reports to give to you kind of a more precise, um, way of presenting the, the information. Uh, the actual official, um, numbers will come, at least more of the financials will come with our audit, which will hopefully be received in December. Um, and it might not be till later December, so it might not come to the board before January. Um, so the, the first several pages here, and again, these summary pages are what I put together. I included those in the report, John has them up here. Uh, but it has, uh, the data, especially this first report goes back to fiscal year two thousand and eight. Uh, so it gives you a lot of comparison, which again, I think is helpful for a board as you go to make decisions. Um, so what we do, and of course, most of you know, we have seven different funds that we operate with the district. Of course, the general fund covers the majority of the day-to-day operations of the district. Uh, so that's one that is really under constant scrutiny by us, by the board, by the state. And what I did was I, in that last column, uh, I did analysis, a comparison of what happened from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one. And again, these reports are as of June thirtieth of these years. Um, and what this particular report does is it shows the unassigned fund balance. So basically, this is money that is sitting in the, um, bank that is not designated for any particular purpose. So we could use that money basically for any purpose that we wanted to within the legal constraints of that fund. So again, we had a, I think I've shared some of this preliminary data before, especially with the finance committee a couple of months ago. But, um, our general fund unassigned balance went up almost nine hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is, uh, again, a, a good indicator, a financial indicator for the district. So, um, you can see that it has, you know, steadily gone up. And, uh, again, we'll, we'll get to, um, one of the financial comparisons in a, in a different report here. But again, that's a good sign for the district. Uh, you can see what the other funds did. The Activity Fund went up about four thousand dollars, Management Fund, a hundred and five thousand. Uh, the Pebble did go down sixty-six thousand dollars. We get a lot of that as just the timing of the expenditures because a lot of those expenditures, what the both Pebble and the Construction Fund, uh, occur during the summer. So some of them might be in one year and the majority in the other year. So it just depends on what the projects, we get to those projects. Uh, the Construction Fund is basically the, um, the sales tax, the penny sales tax fund. That's where all of those revenues go, expenditures, of course, the major construction expenditures come out of that. Uh, then Debt Service Fund, you can see that went down about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But again, it was intended to because what we did was we paid off our final sales tax bond payment. Basically paying off the, the middle school sales tax bond. So, uh, we did, uh, still have about a hundred thousand dollars out in there. And then, of course, Food Service Fund operates kind of on its own. Uh, so you can see that did go down a little bit here, about thirty-five thousand dollars. Second page is just the, um, revenues and expenditures of all those, those seven different funds. Uh, I really won't go into a lot of details there, but you can see again how those fluctuate since twenty, two thousand and ten. Um, just kind of interesting, especially if you look at the, like, Construction Fund. Um, back in two thousand and ten was, uh, one point two million dollars. Uh, last year it was two point five million dollars. So you can see what the sales tax revenues have done over the, over the years, so. But you, likewise, you can see what the other funds have also done. Uh, the, the third one, uh, report that I prepared is the categorical year-end balances. Now, these are separate, uh, these are from the general fund, but these are separate from the other side of balances because these are basically designated funds. So you can see the first line there is the homeschool, um, program, uh, funds that are received from that. Uh, basically, it's, uh, state aid that we give, plus also, um, like, enrollment income from other students that come in from other districts. For that homeschool program, we can only use those funds for that particular purpose. So you can see, uh, we have two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars left. Uh, that it's just designated as of June thirtieth for that. And you can see, uh, most of the other, um, categories there, especially the salary improvement, teacher professional development, the market factor money, the, uh, model core money. Those are a lot of state funds, there's, uh, state programs that are specific, and we have to use those funds for those particular purposes. Also preschool, STEM, the STEM is a, a grant from the middle school that's been going on for seven years and, um,